Good afternoon and welcome to the Burlington City Council Candidate Forum, conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnership's Government Relations Committee. My name is Brandon North and I will be your moderator this afternoon. Our timekeeper is Stephen Brody with the Greater Burlington Partnership. In the interest of time and fairness to the other candidates, I am going to ask each candidate to observe Stephen's signal and stop your response when time is up. The forum will consist of rounds of questions to which each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond. A decision was made by the Government Relations Committee to have candidates answer the questions impromptu. In other words, they have not seen the questions in advance. Questions from the audience or online will be reviewed to ask if time permits. Candidates are seated in alphabetical order. On my right I have Robert Kreitzer and Jennifer Cleaver-Kirkman. On my left I have Tim Scott and Kay Weiss. Let's have you all start by introducing yourselves and share why you are running for a spot on the city council.
My name is Robert Kreitzer. I'm currently serving my first four-year term on city council. I'm running again because I believe that I represent most of the people in Burlington. Just as an average citizen, I'm a blue collar worker. I have a family. I have three daughters. Been married for 16 years. I retired from Walmart after 20 years. I spent six years in the National Guard. I've been delivering bread for three years with Sara Lee. So if you look at my life experience and the things I've done in Burlington, I represent a majority of the people here. I'm uniquely honest and open, so you can ask me just about anything and get an honest answer. I believe in transparency and, you know, I'm willing to take some heat sometimes if I answer a question that I'm not sure that you're going to like the answer to. At least I'm going to be honest with you and tell you how it is.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cleaver-Kirkman. I'm a transplant to the Burlington area. About almost 20 years ago, I moved here for my first job, straight out of law school. I have a daughter who is a freshman and I am a small business owner. I'm running for city council because I believe that I have some unique skills that I could lend to the council. I also think that Burlington needs to be marketed better. I think transplants are -- it's a unique opportunity to be so in love with the community that I didn't even grow up in. But I've been here for so long, it's been the only place that I've lived my entire adult life. So one of the things that I would like to see happen is to try to market the community a little bit better and bring people into the community that would like to invest here, you know, be proud owners in our community.
I'm Tim Scott. I'm running for the fifth time for city council, or running to be elected the fifth time. I have lost an election or two in the past as well. But I -- some of the specific things, and one of the specific things that I didn't get clarified before was I want to pay particular attention to abandoned and dilapidated buildings and dangerous homes as well. The -- I'm okay if they're safe and secure and the property is somewhat maintained. And I do support redevelopment of older buildings. And I'll put my money where my mouth is. I bought the old Firestone building. I got it ready for redevelopment and actually was going to do the redevelopment myself when somebody walked in and purchased the building from me. I sold that building and then purchased the two buildings across the street. And I'll try to explain the rest when I have time.
I'm Kay Weiss, and I think many of you probably know me from my work at the public library. I was there for 20 years. I, like Jennifer, am a transplant here, and the architectural richness of this community just blew me away when I came for my interview. I couldn't -- I was living in northern Minnesota where no white person lived before 1905, so I could not believe the variety of buildings here was totally hammered. Since I've lived here, we've worked on the restoration of three buildings, two of which were condemned by the city at the time we got them, so.
Thank you, Kay. Thank you, everyone. We'll start with Robert here. What role should local government play to create an environment that would grow our population and attract additional workforce?
Local government should partner with groups like the Greater Burlington Partnership, who have their own economic development. They have interest in some of the buildings and redevelopment in Burlington, and they're responsible for attracting jobs. We support that via the hotel motel tax, which we feed by having, let's say, the Monster Match at the Recplex or any sporting events. Anytime we can bring tourists into Burlington, that helps support the efforts of that group. So the deal that the partnership set up with the Viking Cruise Line, for example, we helped facilitate that where we could. Our role as local government, though, is to support those entities that bring those people in. So there's a lot of moving pieces there. I wouldn't say that the city government itself is responsible for a majority of the pieces on the board, just the board itself, if we're talking chess pieces. And so really, our goal is just to support the things that help us grow. People asked me when I ran what three things did I want to bring to Burlington, and instead I asked them, and they said, "I want a place to work, a place to live, and stuff to do." And I think that we've been delivering on those three things, and that I think those three things will help us meet our goals.
Jennifer, same question.
Well, I think when you're talking about recruitment of individuals who want to be invested in a community to come to a community, the main things that I look at is jobs. Obviously, I think that's number one. So any incentives that the city can provide to new industry to come to town, whether that's tax abatements or some other form of incentivizers. I know the chamber works very hard to do those recruitment pieces, but I think the city can be a good partner in that. I also think that people look at a community that is vibrant and has a lot of different opportunities. I think people look for good schools. I think for -- people look for a community that is safe. I think that people look for a community that has good access to healthcare. Those are the main things that I think most people are looking for when they want to move to a community. Those are certainly the things that I would be looking for if I wanted to move to a community. I think we have a lot of those things. I think there are certain elements that could be increased or fostered a little bit more. But I think a lot of it also comes down to presentation and word-of-mouth advertising or advertising in other communities. Tourism helps with that because people come to a community and they look around, they say it's beautiful, there's plenty of things to do here. But you don't want people to only visit. You want them to actually have incentivizers that get them into the community. And I think people move first for jobs. I think that people move secondarily for schools. And then after that, you're kind of looking at the other community elements like good restaurants and, you know, things to do and recreation and all of those things. We just -- we have it. We just need to sell it a little bit more than we've currently been selling it. And I think that that is kind of the direction we need to be headed in.
I think if we do in the neighborhoods like we've done in the downtown over the last
25 years, the -- after the comprehensive plan was approved and going from, if anybody can remember what it was like in 2000, and then looking at it today, it's a tremendous difference. There's been two complete redos of Jefferson Street now, and it's -- and this time, almost all of the buildings are full. If we can go out to the neighborhoods and make the same kind of efforts out there as we made in the downtown, I think we'll see an attraction from people looking for work and wanting to live in a community like ours. One of the things that I've repeated several times before is, I had a meeting with a citizen one time, and he was a member of the Chamber of Commerce. He actually took a group of Russians on a tour of Burlington. And as they were driving down the road, the Russian turns and looks, and he says, "I see you made everybody cut the grass for our tour. You made them clean up their houses, and you instructed them to do all of this." And he said, "No," he said, "that's the way Burlington is." He says, "No, that's a lie." And he says, "Well, you tell me where you want to go." He says, "You think I have a planned route. You tell me where to turn." And everywhere they turned, they were seeing what every neighborhood looked like back then. If we can do that again today and get our neighborhoods back up to what they were 30 years ago, 40 years ago, we'll see the attraction. We'll see people coming to Burlington.
I think that Burlington has so much to offer, and even people driving through on Highway 34 have the opportunity to see that we have prairie restoration going on along the highway. They can see the public library from the highway. They can see people whose grass is cut from the highway. They can see some of the outstanding homes, and they don't even need to get out of their cars. But I agree with Jennifer. We need to get the local people to appreciate what they have here and to talk to others about it. So often, people are negative about what's happening in Burlington. And instead of understanding that the work on Jefferson Street was tied with flood mitigation, all I hear is, "Well, they're tearing Jefferson Street up again," you know, without an understanding of why it's being done. So I think the council can help that kind of issue by seeking to educate our local populace and help them understand there are opportunities for them to sell the community and not just depend on the chamber and the council to do that.
Thank you, Kay. And Jennifer, we'll start this next question with you. How engaged are you in the city's housing issues and discussions? And what are some strategies you might suggest for improving housing conditions and affordability in the community?
Excuse me. Well, I've been following it. Unfortunately, I'm just getting over a pretty significant cold, so I wasn't able to be at the last meeting where I know there was a lot of conversation about housing, and I think that meeting went on for a couple of hours. I think the -- I think education is really important about what the city council can and cannot do. I mean, there are certain things that are just beyond the jurisdiction of the city council. I think affordable housing is really important. I think it's going to be even more important as we see a potential another influx of individuals coming into our community. So I think that needs to be reviewed probably more often than it's currently being reviewed. And I think that that's going to be, you know, a big issue. I think that the extent to which rental inspections are done, the extent to which housing units are, you know, in appropriate conditions are all important. Affordability is a little bit harder because I think affordability comes down to market conditions, and there's only so much that the city council's going to be able to control in that particular environment. So I think, again, it comes down to public education, and I think that the council can maybe be a little bit more transparent on its powers. I think that that's one element of it, is just the extent to which the city council has the authority to do some of the things that maybe the community is asking them to do.
I don't know.
Honestly, I've been a little concerned about all the volume of apartments that are being constructed. I think it's good. I'd love that they're using the old buildings and that they're -- even that they're creating new, but I'm a little concerned that we don't have the population to fill those without causing harm to other housing -- other housing issues, like affordable housing in neighborhoods, individual, single-family homes. And being in my previous business, I spent a lot of time in apartment buildings, and I spent a lot of time talking to landlords in bigger complexes and in smaller ones. And they -- there was a lot of despair in the fact that they couldn't fill those buildings, and then all of a sudden, they were -- everybody was full. They just -- they were even able to increase the rents. And that was mostly because of the fertilizer plant. And then, and now the opposite is true again. They're having a difficult time filling apartments. And I'm glad we're ready because I think we're going to see another boom like we saw with the plant, with the fertilizer plant, when the ammunition plant gets on board and gets their project started. And as they increase their manufacturing and number of people to employ out there. So it's -- it still makes me a little nervous that we've got that in abundance of apartments right now.
I think housing will always be an issue because the number of people who own their homes in Burlington is about 60 percent. Forty percent of the population needs to find places to live. And so there has to be a balance between what landlords are willing to accept for rent and what people can afford to pay. And I feel like there's a homeless population here that we're not serving very well at all. So I think that also needs to be considered in the mix. As I said earlier, I've restored a couple of houses that were on the city's demolition list, so I know it can be done. Some people say it's a money pit, but on the other hand, I've added two buildings to the tax rolls that weren't generating any tax at all. So if we can encourage folks, either through incentives or inspections or whatever it takes, to bring their buildings up to code and get them filled, that's -- would be a good thing. But I agree with Jennifer. The council has limited control, and even though we're a rural city, the state legislature can override the things that we do. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, I guess.
Okay. Well, I've been involved in housing discussions quite a bit because I'm currently serving on the council. We've discussed everything from small houses. We've decided that as a city, it's kind of difficult for us to be landlords. We did have that Monday meeting where we discussed with all the landlords about rental inspections and the frequency and the things they would like to see and what we'd like to see to improve our housing stock, which I think they're doing already, and any safety concerns that we've had. We do sell abandoned homes, so if we're able to acquire a property, we do take bids on those, and then we auction them off, and then we give them a timeline to remodel and repair that home and make it livable again. And that's created some new housing in Burlington or renewed housing in Burlington. We try to facilitate the finding grants, and we write letters of support for people like Chris Ailes, who wanted to rehab the Apollo Building and make a senior living center. But that didn't work out for him because another group got the grant, and they're building apartments behind the Aldi store, which I believe are low income. So we're addressing it in that way. As far as what Kay said about homelessness, that's been a -- that's been something I've noticed, and it's difficult to see that. And we are starting a homelessness task force. We've worked with transitions before and the homeless shelter to see what we can do. Public services have gone out when it's cold to see if they need shelter, if we can find a place for them. But I do think that we're working on it, and it does need more work, but I know that it's always on our mind.
Thank you, Robert. Tim, we'll start this next one with you here. Since communication with the public is a key requirement for public office, what specific ways will you work to listen and respond to constituent input?
It's one of my favorite topics. My phone's always on, my computer's always on. I can be reached by text, I can be reached by phone calls, I can be reached by email. It's extremely important to me that the -- as we progress through, as I progress through council, my very first council, it was suggested that we start an early question-and-answer period with citizens. We spent 45 minutes prior to the meeting, talking with citizens and letting them give us their input, and we had a back-and-forth. We had a dialogue. There was truly a lot of good that came out of that. And then, as the years went by, somebody had suggested that we can't discuss items that are not on the agenda. And that was brought, and I think that actually come through a city manager's website. And then school boards picked up on it, and a lot of county boards picked up on it. And we were no longer able to have a dialogue unless it was something that was on the agenda. We've come to find out very recently, according to the Attorney General, it's not a problem. It's not an issue. It's not an issue with him. It's not an issue with the public. And I want to get that point across. If I get on council, if a citizen wants to come and talk to us, we're going to talk to them. We can't take action on it, but we can talk to them. We can have that dialogue. We can find out what the problem is. A lot of very good ideas come from the public and not from the five people that sit on the council.
I think being open is one of my strong points. One time, it was suggested to me that the people who worked with me couldn't really pin me down because I was always open to somebody else's suggestion, which may or may not be a good thing. But I think that being visible in the community is the prime thing. I know you can talk on the phone, you can send emails, whatever, but face-to-face contact is by far the best. And I do my best to go to farmers' market, to go to activities that happen in the community, to walk in the community. I do a lot of walking. People tell me they see me walking all the time. And you stop and talk to people and get their suggestions and their comments. And that's how I found out that very few people knew that the work on Jefferson Street had to do with flood mitigation. They thought it was just being torn up for new pavements or something. So I think being available is the biggest issue.
Would you be so kind to run the question back?
Absolutely. Since communication with the public is a key requirement for public office, what specific ways will you work to listen and respond to constituent input?
Okay. Well, I have a job where I'm in the public daily. I have a delivery job, so before that, it was Walmart. I'm always in a store somewhere. I'm always out shopping somewhere. My wife is in players workshops, so people see me at the plays. We're involved with the schools, so they see me in the schools. They see me at the parades. If you're at the homecoming parade, you might have got a hug from me. But I'm willing to stop and talk and answer questions to the point where my kids, if they're with me, they'll tell me before I go into Hy-Vee or Walmart, "No talking today, Dad. It's time to go. We're hungry." I do believe in transparency, so sometimes I have these conversations with our constituents, and they don't always like my answer because I tell them that, you know, this is just how it works, and this is how budgets work, or this is why this project is the way it is, or why we can't have a haunted house in the Apollo Building. And they don't always like what I have to say, but I tell them how it works, and they can always contest that. The other thing I can do, I would say that me and John Phillips are probably the most visible on Facebook and social media, but I'll get in the trenches, and the chatter page is ruthless, and I'll get in there and I'll have discussions with those people. I recently had people tell me that they hope I'm not reelected because they didn't like the way that I replied to them. I was being civil and I was being kind, but they see it as catty and rude, I guess. But Facebook's a hard read. To get a reaction for what you're -- what you read and what you actually would get from the person probably differ. If they knew me and spoke to me in person, their reaction would, the same words, be a lot different than what you see online. So that's a struggle. But I let them know that I'm always available, and they can call me anytime.
As far as being reachable, I mean, I'm very reachable. I, you know, do email and texting and Facebook and phone. I've got an office right on Jefferson Street that people walk in and talk to me regularly while I'm there. And I'm also pretty active in the community. I've got a freshman, so I'm at the football games, and I'm at the homecoming parade, and I'm at all those things as well. I think a real goal of mine, if I'm elected, is to get out in front of things. So not just being transparent after things have happened, but getting out in front of things before they even happen. For instance, like the Jefferson Street remodel, maybe going door-to-door with the owners of those businesses before Jefferson Street was remodeled and getting out in front of it, instead of answering the questions after they've been presented and after the work has already started. I'd like to be in a position where we can do a little bit more community involvement and get out in front of the issues before they're even, you know, in progress. And I think that that's one of the things that I'd like to do if I have the opportunity. Because at the end of the day, we're serving the public. I mean, that's really what it is. We would try to make the best decisions that we could with the information that we had and the budget that we had, and so on and so on. But we're still serving the people that live in this community. And so being transparent with those people and telling them in advance of things happening is, I think, really vital.
Okay. We'll start with you on this next one. Knowing that recent property tax legislation that was passed last spring will lead to reduced tax revenues for municipalities, how would you balance the general fund? For example, cut services or seek alternative revenues beyond property taxes?
I think as a community, we already seek revenues beyond property taxes. I know it's going to be a very naughty issue. I would hope that we, as a council, if I'm on the council, that we could work with other councils to lobby our legislators to explain that this isn't really going to work for the more rural cities of the state. We have a low cost of living in our community, which makes it very attractive to live here, but it also means that our property values are lower than the property values in some of the more prosperous places. And we, for the same value, we don't get as -- for the same tax levy, we don't get as much revenue as some of the other places because they have larger tax bases, even though they might have no more population than we. I think that we also need, as a community, to have a lot of open meetings to see what people value. People supported a library levy for years and years and built a library with private funding primarily. So it seems to me the library's probably pretty important here. But the trails have been built almost exclusively with private dollars, and the parks have playgrounds built with private dollars, so it's hard to say that we're supporting our community fully with our taxes.
Thank you, Kay.
This property tax reform has hampered our ability to budget in the future. We're okay for now. I think the state legislature could probably start fixing it during their next session and maybe not leave us in a bind for the next five years or whenever it sunsets. Beyond property tax, we have a local option sales tax that's safe for now, the 1% tax, which we did vote on, which is also in danger of being taken away from us in the next year. I would hope that they would consider leaving that alone. Not all communities participate in the local option sales tax, so it wouldn't be fair to collect it from us and then give it to another community. We do preach the shop-local mantra and try to keep people close to home and shop local and stay local. And if there's no incentive to do so, people might take their business elsewhere. I would urge them to still stay at home and help support those businesses that support you. One of our options we've considered is a franchise fee. It's not a popular one. And it also would supplant the local option sales tax that's on the current utility bills. So if you even just did a 1%, it would just, for the average citizen, it would be a wash. But entities like churches and nonprofits would have to pay their portion of it in their utilities, which would help. I believe I was looking at the numbers. If we even did a 2%, it would only be like $2.50 a month, and that would help generate some revenue that would help the general fund. I don't think we should cut any services, and I think that everything can be budgeted. We may be looking for more grants and things to help.
Yeah, I don't think that anyone wants to see services cut. I mean, obviously, I think that that would be sort of the last thing that would be on my list. I think looking for other revenue sources would be the primary objective, whether that's incentivizing, you know, new builds to come to town, incentivizing, you know, more businesses to, you know, take root in some of the vacant buildings so that we can generate some more property taxes that way. I think the franchise fee is something that definitely has to be looked at. I know that that's probably an unpopular thing to say, but at the end of the day, if everyone is paying towards what is happening with the city, I think that that is helpful, including those entities that currently aren't paying property taxes. I also, you know, know that the council has looked diligently at grants and anything that they can get in that regard. I think that that's very helpful when it comes to some of the projects that have been happening in the city. And I also think that recruitment, again, of greater populace, of people who want to be invested in our community, I think would be helpful. I mean, if we are able to grow our population with people who want to take pride in their community and be invested in their community, that's only going to help the city coffers. That's a slower thing to have happen. But overall, I think that needs to be a focus so that ten years from now, hopefully, we've got more people who are paying property taxes and living here and caring about their lawns and their schools and a variety of other things.
I've sat on several councils that's had to deal with this in the past. The machinery and equipment tax was probably the biggest issue of the time. For me, everything's on the table, and we'll have to sit as a council and work very hard at it. I mean, there can be service cuts, there can be fee increases. That's, it's all got to be out there because there's a minimum that we do have to pay. We do have to maintain salaries, we do have to keep the lights on. And we do have to provide some minimal services. But there are some nits and lice that can be cut out if it comes down to it. If the legislature's not going to allow us to tax what it costs us to operate the city, then we've got to reverse how we operate the city and let the citizens know where it's coming from. And everybody's right. We struggle because our property values aren't comparable to many other communities that are used as a base throughout the state. And that needs to be reflected in the decisions that are made at state level. I know we'll get through it. Council will get through it. Whoever's sitting here will get through it. We've got a good administrator and an excellent leader as far as financial and hired by the city council, so I'm confident in it.
Robert, we'll go back to you for this next one. There's a referendum on the ballot to build a third fire station in Burlington to meet national safety standards of a four-minute response time. And I have a two-part question here. Do you support the referendum? If the referendum does not pass, what do you see as the city council's role in addressing this issue?
All right. I do support a third fire station. I think that four-minute response time is critical. I think that safety is paramount when you're protecting lives and property. I don't think any fire stations around here do it as well as Burlington does. As far as if the referendum doesn't pass, they have another year to get ready and try again, would be my advice. As far as working a potentially $7 million fire station in the budget currently, when we're already, I feel like we're committed to the Cascade Bridge, we can't keep kicking that can down the road. So you got to eat that piece of the pie before you move on to the next one. So I don't like the idea of shuffling projects around and prioritizing something that big when we've been working on this Cascade Bridge since 2020 for this long, and it's been delayed this long. I know they wanted a third fire station in the past, and then things got moved around, and then the central station, I believe, got a remodel or something happened. We actually closed the one at the bottom of Osborne Hill. I think they were using that for quite a while in the past. So they've experienced this before, they still give great service already. I would like to see a third fire station. And I think having that ambulance hub out there by Vista or by wherever they're at right now is a difficult choice for them to be there in tight quarters and not really fair to have them serve from those quarters. But it is what it is right now, and we'll keep working on it. But I hope that it passes in November, to be honest. It'd just be a lot easier to fund it that way.
Thanks. Yes, I'm in favor of the referendum. I think having a third fire station is important. I think fire and safety is kind of, you know, just the foundation of providing services as the city goes. Excuse me. I've seen kind of the area that they operate out of presently that's out there by what used to be the Krispy Kreme factory. And it does appear to be somewhat difficult, in my mind, to sort of navigate around all of the fencing and increase response time and those kinds of things. So in the event that the referendum isn't successful, then I think the city would have to evaluate whether or not that space is still a feasible space for them to continue to operate out of until such time as a referendum could be passed. And, you know, if it's sort of the best that we have to offer, then continue to work out of that space until something better comes along. But I think that's something that needs to be continuously evaluated just because I think fire and safety is sort of the bedrock of the services that the city needs to be providing to its citizens.
Yeah, I support the idea of a third fire station, one on the north side. As far as the referendum, I think that's a decision that the citizens should make. If it doesn't pass, I think we should go right back at it. But with the idea of providing those services that they're talking about, and that's a four-minute response time with fire and ambulance, and cut out maybe the rest that's in there, or find a less expensive way of providing those services that they want to provide over and above the response time. Education center or training center. I think there's plenty of other opportunities there if the referendum should fail. But again, it's up to the citizens, and they just need to know that I support the fact that we need a third fire station. We need to reduce that response time. And the upside is that we'll probably see some savings in our insurance premiums that we pay for on our properties. The better the value, I forgot what that's actual called, but the better the rating we get for fire protection, the lower our insurance is.
I too am in favor of a new fire station. And I would hope that all the citizens of Burlington would consider the common good for those folks who are currently outside of four-minute response time and would vote to ensure that they also get the four-minute response time that half of the community gets now. I think if the referendum should fail, we'd have to think about other options because I think, as Jennifer said, safety demands that we try to provide a four-minute response time for as many of our citizens as we can.
Thank you, Kay. Jennifer, we'll start with you on this next one. Do you support the Cascade Bridge project? And if so, should it be open to pedestrians, vehicles, or both?
Yes, I support Cascade Bridge. I think it's just a, it's kind of a landmark, you know. It's been part of the community for such a long time. And Crapo Park is just kind of an amazing asset for this community to have. I would be in favor of it being both pedestrian and a vehicle bridge. I also think it's important that it be addressed just from a liability standpoint. I mean, so there's the aspect of keeping it in service because it is a landmark and it's a historical kind of thing, and it services a lot of citizens, both who live over in that area and also easier access to get to the park. But we also don't want to have a bridge that is not in good repair potentially be a liability for the citizens. So I think that that is something that needs to be addressed. I know that it's a project that the city council has been working towards, and I know that there's even some grant money that is going to help get to where the city needs to be. So yes, I would be very much in favor of seeing that happen.
That's a goal of mine since 1998, was to, I shouldn't say that. It was more like 2003, 2004, when we found out what the real issues were with that bridge. It's been much longer than that, that it's needed repairs. But I always hoped to be able to replace that bridge. If there's any talk about reconstruction of the original bridge, I wouldn't support that at all. The design has no redundancies built into it. So if one part of it fails, the whole thing comes down. Bridges that have been built since then have multiple portions to the structure that keeps the structure standing, even if one part of it fails. So I think it's a very important part of not just a roadway, but, and not a Great River Bridge, but it's also a part of the parks. And I think a very, very critical part of the parks.
Yes, I support the Cascade Bridge for pedestrians and vehicular traffic.
There, that just sums it up. Thank you, Kay. So Tim was right about the Cascade Bridge. It's an inverted Baltimore Trust Bridge, and if one piece fails, the whole thing could crash into the ravine. Right now, it's stable, but that's why it's close to pedestrian traffic as well as automobile traffic. I remember we had a discussion in the past where they thought that if enough people walked across the bridge after a show at the Band Shell in Crapo Park or after a ballgame, that if enough people walked on it once, that the vibrations could actually cause enough damage to it to cause it to fail. We did do, we did get $2 million worth of grants so far towards the bridge. So that's a big chunk. I wouldn't say no to that. We did an impact study and a forum back prior to 2020, and 70% of the people involved were in favor of replacing the bridge, not repairing it because of, when you lay out all the options, I believe they gave three options, and we discussed everything. Everybody agreed it would be better to build a new bridge. A new bridge made from concrete and sturdier materials should have a 100-year lifespan with a four-year maintenance plan. A rehab Cascade Bridge as it is, they said maybe 50 years with a two-year maintenance plan, and it would be more expensive to repair and maintain in the long run. I definitely think it needs to be done. It connects our beautiful downtown to our beautiful parks. We do have some tourism here. We have people that come for the Snake Alley Criterium, they come to see Snake Alley, they come to see our riverfront, they come on these Viking cruises and the riverboats, and they want a straight shot to the park. They don't want to drive up the hill and then over, and then over again, and then back to see our beautiful parks. They want the easiest way they can get to it with a view along the way. So we'll get that work done, we'll get the sewer done, and some roads done too when we're done.
Tim, we'll go with you on this one. Robert and Jennifer had brought it up earlier, but the city of Burlington is looking into a utility franchise fee. What is your understanding of this fee? Why is it necessary, and what is your position?
It's another funding source, and I would not vote in favor of it myself unless it was put before the people in a referendum. It's a, I think it's a self-tax, and if the council and people like the chamber support it and they can get out and convince the people, then I would support it as well. But as a member of the five-person council, I would not put that on the people without their opportunity to express themselves in form of referendum.
I think franchise fees can be useful. I also think they can be regressive in that they might tax the people who have less money to share with the community. Who, so I have really mixed feelings about franchise fees, and I would like us to explore some other options before we would settle on a franchise fee. I agree with Tim that getting a sense from the voters about how they feel would be a necessary step.
So, is a utility franchise fee necessary? Not necessarily. And I think if we put it to a referendum, historically, it would fail. People don't want to be taxed, they don't want to pay extra, and it's hard to make them understand why they should. So you're never going to win a popularity contest with that one. But I will tell you that if we lose out on the local option sales tax, this could supplant that, and it would be a reasonable exchange, and it would make just marginally a little bit more because of the entities that don't pay property tax currently or the nonprofits. We do have lots of rental properties in Burlington, and we're about to add a lot more. So those people would also be subject to a franchise fee. So if somebody else pays their property tax, and this would be their way of contributing, we're looking at losing some revenue because of this property tax reform and a decrease in our valuation. So unless we can figure out ways to add to that or add to our population, we're going to be hurting for revenue over the next five years and maybe beyond that. So it's a difficult thing. Like I said, we could go to a referendum, I just don't feel like it would pass. I would love to have it at a council meeting and discuss the life out of it until people are tired. are tired about hearing about it. Just because we do three readings doesn't mean that we have to stop there. We can kill it and bring it back. So I don't know. I would be in favor of it based on my experience, but I can understand why a lot of people would not be interested in it right now.
I think this is a difficult issue and one that I agree needs community input. I don't know if it necessarily needs a referendum, but I think it needs a lot of community input. I think that the general economy that everyone is living in today, you can barely, you know, go anywhere without hearing about the price of everything going up, right? Groceries and everything else. So I think that people are struggling, and I think that adding a franchise fee to their utility bills is something that people aren't going to want to really hear about. But I do think that education is important in that regard because, to a large extent, my understanding of the franchise fee is that we're basically just going to be adding another pot of money, that instead of going back to the same people over and over again, we're going to be adding different groups to that pot of money. Nonprofit organizations that aren't currently paying property taxes. As Robert said, talking about renters that aren't paying their own property taxes. So I think if we can educate the public that we're not necessarily just kind of going back to the same group of people and constantly asking them to pay more money, that we're trying to expand what that pot of money looks like, that maybe we can get enough community buy-in that it makes sense for the council to do something along those lines, just to kind of shore things up, since we aren't getting the support from the state that we really should be getting when they had a $1.8 billion surplus. But the upshot is that something has to be done to continue to service the community the way that the community needs to be serviced.
Kay? So Kay, I'll start with you on this one. The Burlington Library will be losing its funding source due to recent legislation from the state of Iowa. This is forcing some hard decisions to fund shortfalls due to levy caps. How do you propose that the library will be supported going forward? And are you supportive of the franchise fee that we just talked about?
I'm not sure that the franchise fee could be earmarked for support of the library. So I'm not sure how that works with the state law. I'm really unsure how the library can move forward. They currently get nearly 40% of the operation costs come from the Friends of the Library and the Friends Foundation. They give some bequests to the library fund much of the purchase of materials. And if it goes over 50%, is that a public library anymore? I lived in a community many, many years ago that had a privately funded library, and the public could go in there, but we weren't allowed to borrow any books. You can sit at the table, but that was it. So it's a very difficult issue, and I feel that an educated populace, which is what libraries do, is necessary to maintain a democracy. And I've already heard of one city in the state where the county funding to the library has been cut by 30% because of the legislation. So it's not just our library. It's libraries across the state that are being impacted by this legislation, and we really need to work on our legislators to say this is not good for our state when we have the surplus we have.
Well, I would agree with Kay. I think the state legislation needs to fix this issue, that we had money earmarked for the library and put the levy caps. It sucks. It doesn't work. It's not helping our library. It's not helping Burlington. It doesn't help Iowa. This doesn't help anybody at all. So I would hope that next year that this gets fixed. This is a black eye on Iowa. We are 40% funded by the Friends of the Library. The building itself was funded by the Friends of the Library. We have one of the best libraries, in my opinion, in the state of Iowa, maybe the top three or top five. This is one of the things that makes Burlington great, and we risk losing our ability to fund it. I'm not down with that. Going back to the, it sucks. I don't even have a good answer for it. I don't know why we're in the situation we're in. I just, it feels like, I hope it's not deliberate. I just, I feel like that it was a shot at Iowans and our desire to educate ourselves and to be involved with the public library. So I don't know how else we'd fund it. I don't know, like she said, if we're allowed to use franchise fees for that. I do know with budgets, if you can cover one part of your budget with one sliver over here, maybe this sliver can be used for that and we can move stuff around. But then you're just shuffling cards to make things work. We shouldn't have to do that either. So I don't want to shuffle the budget around and slide things around. I want it to be straight line, clear, transparent, just this is what we do. This is how we get from A to B, not if A happens, then B, then C, and then D can come cover A. I don't want to play Monty.
I had only been in town for maybe about a year when the library got built, and it's phenomenal. I mean, anyone who's ever set foot in it knows that it's a true asset to our community. In my opinion, it has to be preserved. I don't know entirely how all of that's going to happen. I think it's truly unfortunate that a levy that was voted on by the community is being capped out now by the state. And I think that that's truly problematic and obviously something that anyone who is politically oriented should consider when they're talking to their legislators for next year. But in my mind, it's a priority. We have to figure it out. I don't know how we're going to figure it out. I don't know what all the moving parts are going to be, but there has to be some way of maintaining the library because it truly is one of the hallmark assets that our community has, and it's a major service that we're able to provide to our community, especially to educate our children and to have the kind of resources available that are necessary to just kind of keep everybody going. When you talk about homelessness or other problematic areas or underserved portions of our population, the library is a true asset to a lot of those individuals, and so it has to be preserved. It's more than just education. It's also a safe haven for people to go to. It's a warm place for people to have a cup of coffee sometimes. I mean, it needs to be a real priority for our community.
I don't have an answer either. I don't know where we're going to come up with that, but I would just like to respond maybe to a previous discussion that the, we don't need a forum for the franchise fee. When the SMID tax come up, it was not a referendum. It was a, it was a sales job by the Chamber and others to get the downtown property owners to accept a self-tax. And it passed overwhelmingly. More than 80% of the people supported it. And when the local option sales tax was first presented, it passed by a relatively slim margin, but every 10 years after that, it passed by a large percentage. So I have confidence in the people that if they see our, if we explain to them, we show them the desperation, the desperate position that we're in, that a franchise fee may be foreseeable in our future if we trust our citizens. If it doesn't happen, then we're back to the drawing board and looking at other options.
Now we'll get to our closing statements. You'll have 60 seconds, and in your remarks, please share with us what sets you apart from the other candidates. And Robert, we'll start with you.
Man, I'm just built different. If you know me, I'm built a little different than everyone else. When someone tells you to be a stranger in your own backyard, like, I'm that guy. I'm the guy that rolls into Burlington and falls in love with it every time I see Burlington. I'm falling in love all over again. I want to participate in as many things as I can. I did the police academy, the fire academy, the Citizens Academy. I came to meetings before I was on council. I was writing for the newspaper and writing opinion articles, and all my opinions were about all of you guys. It was about the things I heard and saw in Burlington, and the things that I loved are the things that I wanted to acknowledge. And I spent two years doing that before I got on council. Since I've been on council, I continue to be involved. I'm out running with my friend or my wife's in the Players Workshop. I am uniquely involved in Burlington in multiple levels.
As I said earlier, I'm a transplant, so I'm not from here. I live here because I love living here, and I've been here for 20 years. I'm an advocate for a living. I mean, obviously, I'm an attorney, so, and I go to trials a lot, so I'm pretty good at communicating and getting my point across and advocating for things that I believe in. I'm raising a child here, so I have a vested interest in this community. I have a vested interest in the schools, the safety of the community, and a variety of other aspects that all go along with child rearing, including access to healthcare and so on and so forth. I'm a newcomer to all of this, so I think I am teachable, and I think that there's probably a lot that I have to learn, but I am pretty good at soaking things up and reading things. I'm also somewhat uniquely positioned to read laws and legislation, so I think that those are some of my assets.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, just asking you to share what sets you apart from the other candidates. You have 60 seconds.
I'm old and I'm fat.
Me too.
I've got 16 years of experience on city council, another two years of experience on the school board. I've been involved with the community in so many different ways. I spent eight or nine years as a reserve police officer and was very involved there. The, we, another neighbor and myself started a neighborhood program. We meet once a month and have a luncheon, and there's, you know, sometimes a dozen, sometimes two dozen folks show up. We have a community-wide breakfast by invitation, and we've had as many as 80 people show up for the breakfast. We do that three times a year. Gee, Merry Christmas. I give up.
Okay. I feel that my enthusiasm for Burlington can help me look for all kinds of opportunities to share the good things about Burlington and to address the issues that are here. I've served as a city department head for 20 years, so I know quite a bit about the city budgeting process, and I know how difficult it is to assess a fire truck against a police car or, you know, something else against the library or whatever. And it's not an easy process, and it will not be easy in the next five years at all.
Thank you, Kay. I want to thank each and every one of you for your interest in serving the Burlington community. Public service can often be a thankless job, but we need dedicated individuals to serve. I want to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership and its government relations committee for hosting this event, and thank those in the audience here and those who have been watching and who are listening online for your interest in this city council election. Please vote for the candidate of your choice on Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you.